I'd like to call the Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Cluuk, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at, uh, just inside the door when you came in. I don't know if I saw Andrew. Andrew Rainbolt here. There you go. And they have Andrew give us a second quarter report. And you're going to mention the name change?
I hope, I hope you can see, yep.
Hey, we got, we got quite a few people in the audience, too. If you can give maybe even just a quick background on what Grow Sarpy is.
Sure. Uh, well, I'm Andrew Rainbolt. I'm the executive director of what is now known as Grow Sarpy. Up until last week, we had been known as Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation. Uh, we've, uh, we were incorporated in 1975 as a Sarpy County Industrial Development Corporation. Uh, and we've been serving, uh, Sarpy County and the cities of Sarpy County as our kind of economic development entity since then. Uh, we're a nonprofit organization and we, uh, we, we wanted to do, um, app, I guess, based on all the, all the success that the county has had. And Papillion's certainly been a huge part of that. Uh, we wanted to kind of update our look to better help continue to sell, uh, Sarpy to the outside world. And, uh, we, we, we figured we, you know, we come up with a new, uh, logo to do that. And that kind of morphed into, as we hired folks to help us do that, they said, well, you know, Sarpy County Economic Development, uh, Corporation is, is a mouthful for people to say. Uh, and it's, uh, it kind of, uh, it doesn't really, uh, although if you know what we're talking about, it, it helps explain it. But, uh, anyway, we came up with Grow Sarpy as our, our new, uh, name, our new brand. And I really think, uh, I'm, we're excited about it. We think it's going to help us, like I said, go out and, uh, sell Sarpy and, and Papillion to, uh, to the, the rest of the world and, and help us portray an image of, of, uh, of, uh, I guess, modern amenities, uh, that maybe our, our old logo and name didn't really do. So, uh, it will, we'll be, uh, uh, kind of distributing swag and, and, uh, letting people marketing ourselves all over again to, to local folks to let them know that we're the same organization that we've always been, uh, just with the new name and new brand. Uh, part of that is we're going to be out at Werner Park on, uh, on Thursday, August 12th. We'll be the nonprofit of the night there. Uh, so, uh, you can go out to Werner and, and hopefully see us and, and learn, learn a little bit more about that. Uh, but we're going to try to be a little bit more visible in the next year or so as we move forward with the new brand so people understand. Thank you for the opportunity to explain that. All right. So I'll, uh, uh, get into my, uh, my, kind of my usual economic development report here for the second quarter, uh, April to June 2021. And I'll start with building permit valuations. Uh, and, uh, I really couldn't have a better story to tell here. Uh, we've, uh, really knocked it out of the park, uh, and it's in the second quarter and in, uh, in the year so far. Uh, Papillion had a very good quarter at, uh, 418 million plus in building permit valuations. But you see, the county overall was a little over, uh, 1.1 billion. And that would be a really good year for the county. Uh, and it was just the second quarter there. So, uh, so far for the year, we're at about 1.9 billion. Uh, our record year was in 2019 at almost 1.5. So we're, we're, uh, uh, when we used to be kind of before Facebook came in 2017, we were kind of in that 500 million a year range for a little while. So we're a whole, uh, you know, 2016 ahead of, uh, our record year already. And obviously we've still got six months to go. So, uh, the, the bottom line is there's a lot of construction going on out there right now. Uh, and part of that and is, uh, plating new lots. And we've got a couple of, of new, uh, platted lots for, uh, industrial uses. That's one thing that we also track, uh, out on, and they're both in Papillion. Uh, so you guys are aware of them already. But, uh, R and R Realty is, uh, platted and has already pulled a permit for their last building in their, uh, current park out there off of Highway 50 and 370. Uh, and then just a little ways away from that, we have the Highway 370 Industrial Park of the old tree farm there off of 150th and 370. So, uh, two projects that are already underway, uh, and, uh, just plowed their lots this past, uh, quarter. On the, on the family, uh, on the single-family housing side, uh, we had 406, uh, uh, platted lots in the second quarter. A, a large chunk of that was in, in Bellevue and, and the rest were in Gretna for, uh, for that. But, uh, Papillion's been having a great year, too, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that here. But, uh, we also had, uh, 400, um, uh, uh, single-family housing permits across the county. Uh, the majority, uh, close to the majority of those were in, uh, Papillion at 153. So 406 platted lots, 401 single-family, uh, permits. Uh, so basically we're, and it's been doing this for about a, maybe two years now. We're basically building on every lot we're plating. So I think that's a sign of a pretty good housing market there for us. Uh, demand is, is, uh, and maybe we could do more. But we're certainly, like I said, building on all the lots we're plating. On the multi-family housing side, you guys had a large chunk of, uh, of, of, of apartments come in, in the second quarter. Those are the only ones we had. Uh, I hear there's a lot, I, I hear chatter, I guess, uh, that there's, uh, more planning, being planned, I guess, by developers across the county. So, uh, we're kind of down a little bit on, uh, multifamilies so far this year. Uh, but, uh, I don't expect that to be a trend or the case moving forward. The last thing I'll mention on stats is, uh, labor force statistics. Uh, obviously this is something that we've been hearing a lot from employers across the county. And I know, uh, my colleagues have been hearing it, uh, across the metro area. You see our labor force numbers for June 2000, or 2021, uh, we're, we're almost back up to 97,000, uh, which we were there last year before we started to fall. I, I guess what I'll say here is, uh, our, our labor force has been or had been up to almost 100,000. So we're getting back up to where we had been, maybe 2019. Uh, but, uh, you can see our unemployment rate is still down at 2.6. Uh, and total unemployment right now is at, uh, 2,000, almost 2,500 folks. I think, uh, I'm, I don't, I don't remember seeing the unemployment number below 2,000. So we're, we're about getting close to as low as we can probably go. Uh, and, uh, I, I think our, obviously we're going to be having some more jobs come in here. So we've got to continue to grow our labor force and, and it will. But, uh, a pretty tight market out there right now. And, uh, we're hearing that from a lot of, a lot of employers. Uh, we also hear that they're, uh, raising wages to be more competitive as well. I'm going to move over if we can to, uh, my, uh, Grow Sarpy, uh, progress report. Uh, we're having a good year as well. Uh, we've landed four projects so far this year, two in the second quarter. Uh, so total was about, was close to a billion dollars so far for us. Of course, Google and, and Facebook were our two big ones in the first quarter. And the second quarter, we had a $5 million in capital, a little over $5 million in capital investment. Uh, that was, uh, uh, Home Depot Distribution Center here in Papillion. And then also, um, a, uh, an international, uh, blade manufacturer that's opening up a sales office, uh, actually in La Vista. Uh, but, uh, that's, uh, the kind of the model that we've seen with international companies is they open up a sales office and hopefully, uh, move into a warehouse and then maybe actually start manufacturing, uh, down the road there, too. So, uh, a, a great new company to have in there. So total jobs with that is 35. Uh, so, um, you know, not the huge numbers we had in the first quarter, but a couple of good projects. I know we've got at least one more project. I think, uh, we're going to land here, uh, next week. Um, but I, that, that, I guess, like I said, that's the R and R, uh, building that they're already building there. So, uh, we'll count that as one of our projects as well. Uh, on our pipeline, we had eight projects coming in the second quarter. We've had 17 so far this year, which puts us right on path with, uh, where we typically are. A little over 30 projects a year is what we, we usually see. Uh, and seeing a lot of those projects have been manufacturing so far this year. A little difference, last year we saw a lot of food manufacturing. This year we're seeing more medical-related manufacturing. I think both pandemic-related, um, just maybe the beginning of the pandemic, we need, we need new food processing centers. Now we need more, uh, medical, uh, facilities. So, uh, but, uh, a great switch there, too. And the last one is just business interactions, I'll say. Uh, we've been out and about, um, so far, uh, this year and, and making a concerted effort to make more business visits and, uh, more visits with all of our stakeholders and, and getting back out on the road. So, um, really excited about that. Uh, I mentioned the baseball game. One other thing I want to mention, we have a strategic planning session coming up, um, uh, and on August 11th. Uh, and if somebody from Papillion would like to join us, that, that'd be great. Uh, we do it every two years as we kind of do a hybrid of a strategic plan and a program of work. Uh, and so, uh, I think it'll be a great opportunity for us to kind of assess where we are, what we've been doing the last two years, and to see if we want to make any changes and, and, uh, add anything to it, uh, over the next two years. So, um, uh, with that, I'll pause for questions and...
To the, yeah, this one, the pipeline. Uh, I, I, I'm looking at the office surface and it's just a one. Does that indicate that we're not having many people interested in building offices in Sarpy County?
Yeah, I, I would, I would say we, certainly not as much as the, uh, as like warehouse distribution, like kind of like manufacturing.
Is, you know, is that true overall in the metro area?
Say our office projects are down. I think a lot of people are evaluating what they're doing. Um, some larger companies still haven't gone back to their offices yet. So, uh, I, I do think, um, the other trend that we've seen over time, uh, is that they, offices are located kind of in mixed-use, uh, developments. And so, uh, they want, they want to have that kind of walkability and parkability that comes with, with that. So, um...
Okay. Well, I, I, I guess that's, that's consistent. Uh, you know, I can understand the pandemic effect. But it seems that's consistent with what I've seen over the last five, six, eight years. We don't, at least in Papillion, we don't get offices. And I'd like to see more office complexes here. I'm not, nothing against the manufacturing, anything else. But, um, office complexes then add to the population. People live near the, where they work, et cetera. And I just wonder why is it that we're not getting more office complexes in Sarpy County when I see huge ones going up in far west Omaha?
Uh, taking 175,000 square feet. Correct. Yeah. So, yes, we did not work that as a project.
Okay.
And so, yeah, so that would be one that is not in, in, in my books. But I, I, I kind of agree with your thing. There's a large office building out on 192nd and Dodge. And, uh, and, yeah, I drive back, drive by that and I have, I have the same thought.
See, I drive by those and I look at them and though, and say, oh, why in the heck aren't they interested in building at our ballpark facility? And empty land like that?
Yeah. I think that's probably one of the best places. We, we probably have to plan a project like that. And I know there's been plans in the works. So I, I, the trend, like, the trend that we've really seen is, um, in the past where, uh, they might've gone out to a suburban market like ours and, and built a, a large building with a large parking lot around it. Um, that's not happening anymore. They're going to more dense, I don't think, developments where they've got restaurants and things like that. So I know, um, that's kind of the trend, the, what La Vista's going for with their city center. And I think that the same thing can happen out by the ballpark as well.
Well, if, if we're doing something that is discouraging people or is a, is some sort of a hurdle for people to build in offices in Sarpy County and particularly in, in Papillion, uh, please let us know because we don't, because it, because that's something that I see that's missing here. And I'd like to see more offices popping up. So if we're doing something wrong, let us know.
Yeah, I, I really don't think we're doing anything on our last large one that I, I can remember that's been built in the county was Cobalt, uh, or whatever credit union. Um, and so, yeah, I, I, I think as, I guess, as we mature as an office market, I think we'll continue to see more of that. But I, I think we are not fighting a trend, but the, the trend has been to more of the, exar, exurban villages, uh, the new, that now competing with like the Hartwood Preserve there and, uh, and on, uh, West Dodge. So there's a, there is a lot of competition out there. And, uh, I, I think we've got a, a pretty good product to sell. But, uh, I, I, your, your thought is very valid.
Thank you. Ms. Powers, administrative for, please.
Thank you. And thank you to Chief Widdit and his team that made National Night Out, uh, successful this evening. It was a lot of fun to see the outpour of support from the community and from other city staff, uh, for all the love they showed for our police department. Thank you, Chief. And then Mayor Black and I continue to work with the United Cities on the potential bills and for upcoming legislation while also monitoring the impact of laws. Uh, and there's some interim studies that are continuing to monitor involving construction codes and enhanced employment areas. And on the August 17th council agenda, you'll see requests for approval of a five-year contract extension with their current lobbyist firm. And as always, please reach out to Mayor Black and myself if there are any concerns or issues that you want us to keep an eye out on. Um, and then another reminder, the fiscal year 21, 22 public hearing for the budget is going to be after the next city council meeting on the 17th. So it's scheduled for 8:00 PM here at the landing in this room right after a council meeting. And then finally, it's that time again for the city to conduct the citizen survey. Households throughout the city have been selected at random to participate in the survey, which is conducted by the National Citizen Survey. And postcards were sent out this week to those selected households. Please encourage residents to fill them out. We really want a, a high return rate on that if we can get it. And the surveys are anonymous if anybody asks. And we are expecting the results of the surveys by mid-October. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Cluuk. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Mr. Ingberg?
Appropriate time to, uh, uh, ask if we can move a couple of items on the agenda.
Which ones?
Uh, I'd like to move, uh, there's no objection. I'd like to move F1. Since we have public hearings tonight, I'd like to move F2 and F3, uh, right before E1.
Any objection? Okay. Ms. Brown, do you have that? Okay. Any council discussion on the consent agenda? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Cluuk, Stube, Ingberg, 8A's, 0N's.
Motion passes. Item D1, ordinance 1936, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget. Is there a council member that will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Gaines. Item D2, ordinance 1937, an ordinance to approve the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget. Is there a council member that will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. Item D3, ordinance 1938, an ordinance to approve the vacation of the unapproved part of Conestoga Road, abutting lots 47A and 51 Prairie Corners, with title the vest and the abutting property owner, Wickersham Family Limited Partnership. Is there a council member that will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Glover. D4, 1939, an ordinance to rename Conestoga Road within Prairie Corners to Werner Way. Is there a council member that will introduce? Introduced by Councilwoman Cluuk. We're going to jump to items F2 and F3. F2, resolution R210144, a resolution to approve an agreement authorizing PVFD Inc. to install two wall-style monuments and up to three lights, the existing flagpole located in front of PVFD Inc.'s leased building at 1001 Limerick Road. Is there a motion to approve resolution R210144? Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Mumgarth. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Mr. Mumgarth?
PVFD Inc. for the job they've been doing there at the senior center. I'm a neighbor. I drive by it several times a day. And Phil, you too. Um, in the time, I guess we've had about a year now. In that time, I have nothing to complain about. I've heard no neighbors to have anything to complain about. It seems to be very successful. This project will add to the success. So keep it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Cluuk, Stube, Ingberg, 8A's, 0N's.
Motion passes. Thanks, Russ. Item F3, resolution R210145, a resolution to approve Crystal M. Carter as the corporate manager for Buck's LLC doing businesses, Bucky's Express 14, for their Class D liquor license. Motion to approve resolution R210145? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Is he up? Can he hear? Okay. Any council discussion? Can, can you turn your mic on?
I'm, I'm misunderstanding as I read this background summation here. It says that it was sold by, uh, Bucky's to, uh, Casey's and then to Western Oil. So now it's owned by Bucky's again? I, I'm confused there.
I will look for Ms. Brown or Mr. Thielen to answer. But just real quick, what I believe happened is Bucky's and Casey's went together. One, I forget, one bought out the other. But then I think there was, uh, some antitrust issues for too many in the market and they had to dispose of a couple of them. I think it's related to that, but I'll look for staff to clarify.
It is. So you have approved the issuance of a retail liquor license to Speedy Mart. Um, that license has not yet been issued by the State Liquor Commission because there were still some outstanding state-level inspections. In the meantime, Liquor Commission received notice that all Casey's locations statewide were changing to this new corporate manager. So because that is the license that's currently issued for that location, we have to move forward with this manager change, even though the intention is for the location to eventually be owned by Speedy Mart.
To Western Oil as Speedy Mart?
Yes.
Which tells me that's already under new ownership, not part of Casey's. So why should we vote to approve Casey's liquor license for this business?
The liquor license, so we have already approved, we had approved a liquor license for Casey's prior to Speedy Mart, um, taking ownership. So the state issued the liquor license for Casey's. They have not yet finished processing the liquor license for Speedy Mart. So in order for them to continue selling, they are operating under the Casey's liquor license, which is...
On whose authority?
The State Liquor Commission.
They, they allow that even though they don't own it anymore?
Yes. It's, I believe it's under a temporary operating permit.
Okay. Any other questions? Please vote.
Sunday.
No.
Mumgarth.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yeah.
Jaworski.
Yeah.
Cluuk.
Yes.
Stube. Ingberg. Seven A's, one A by Sunday.
Motion passes. So now we're back to E1, uh, public hearings. Uh, we got several of them. Um, and, uh, just a reminder for folks who are here for the public hearing, if they usually don't come. Um, ordinances or passing laws, uh, take what we call three readings, uh, which is basically three separate council meetings. The first one is where a council member will sponsor it. Uh, so the items that are, have a public hearing tonight, that was the previous council meeting. Tonight is the public hearing. Um, public hearing is for council to hear from the public, um, not for the council to respond back and debate. And then the third hearing, which will be the next council meeting then, is when there's, uh, council debate and discussion. And then vote for tonight on all the public hearing items is for us to listen. And we generally give five minutes to the public on each item, and we have several of them. Item E1, ordinance 1932, an ordinance to amend section 205, 249, parking for commercial, personal, and recreational vehicles of Article 36, off-street parking, of Chapter 205 zoning, having to do with the parking regulations for recreational vehicles and trailers. It's a public hearing. I'll first call for proponents are those that are in favor of the ordinance. Then I'll call for opponents and then anybody that's just neutral. So anybody want to speak in favor of the proposed RV ordinance? And when you come up, if you would state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Lorene Renante. 1108 Park Drive in Papillion. So I'm short tonight. Personal property rights are what this public meeting is about tonight. And I would like to thank you all for allowing us to speak this evening. Camping and owning an RV is an American family enjoyment, and the enjoyment is growing. It is a large investment to purchase an RV of any kind and to maintain that investment. Storing your RV is a huge risk for the owner. The storage facility does not assume the risk and liability. Vandalism, physical damage by another vehicle hitting the trailer, and potential flooding are some of the major concerns for an RV owner. Also, rodent infestation is a huge concern. Those mice, uh, can like to chew on the wires. We pay plenty of taxes in the state and county if you own your property. It should be your choice as to whether or not you want to maintain your RV at your home property or store it elsewhere. One of the original participants of this RV group from the 2017 ordinance change gave me permission to share their story and why they are no longer involved. They sold their trailer as it was totaled at a storage facility and have decided that they can no longer fight this battle. They own their trailer and it sat in their driveway when not in use for camping for over 10 years without a problem. And then we had that phantom person that went around the city reporting folks, which ultimately caused this family to store their trailer. Sadly, their personal enjoyment has been ruined. And another, but not so often spoken about, is the actual theft of a trailer at a storage facility. The would-be thief backs up to a trailer, hitches up and pulls out, and no one knows until the owner comes to retrieve their trailer, that it is gone. There are only a handful of storage facilities in Papillion, and finding a storage place is not an easy task. Not to mention the price per month to leave your RV unattended to the potential damage. People have to look further and further away from their home for storage. With the loading and unloading restrictions, it takes all the fun and adventure out of using their RV. Keeping your RV on your property should always be the first choice for the owner. It is the role of government-elected officials to ensure that each citizen has the freedom and liberty by limiting government control by protecting our freedoms and liberties. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mumgarth?
Okay, first off, uh, our court, court current ordinance allows trailers to be parked alongside the house and in front of the house for a certain distance, 20 feet and 45 feet alongside the side yard. Do you own a trailer?
I do.
How long, how is the length of your trailer?
35 feet.
Why can that, that just be parked along the side?
It is. I am in compliance completely.
Okay. So why would we need to make it longer?
Hoping to continue to speak out for those that are not as fortunate as I am with that 20 feet change and the fact that I can concrete paint all the way to my backside of my yard. You don't even see my trailer, but that's not why I'm here. I'm here to help.
Okay. And that, that's fair. Okay. Well, here, I'm going to tell you my view of this ordinance, and then I'm going to let you respond and tell me what...
I just want to be careful that we don't move into council debate.
I'm not going to debate it. I'm just going to interchange with a citizen who wants to present their view. Because then I will allow you to tell me why I'm wrong.
May I interject? I object to this. I'll tell you why. He's trying to argue his point of view when we have that the next meeting. And that's not appropriate for this setting. He's trying to take charge of these citizens who want to be heard. Now he wants to be heard, and I object to that.
Okay. That's heard.
Well, I don't want to do anything unfair. So I'm ultimately going to vote against this. And my views, uh, uh, you know, we've been changing this ordinance since like, like 19, 2019. And my views are well-known. So I'm going to lay them out there, and you can tell me why I'm entirely wrong. Can I convince me?
I do want to hold that for the next meeting.
No, I want to this, give this citizen an opportunity, and any further citizens, an opportunity to look me in the face and tell me I'm wrong. Isn't that what public discussion's all about?
Are you fine with this?
Okay.
I'll be with you all.
Okay.
You know, I don't want to hide it. I don't want to just come back and tell, and, and at the last minute, tell you, uh, tell me my view, your view, my views. Because I want to be fair to you. And I think it's only being fair to you to, to ask you now why I'm wrong.
So now, ma, Mr. Mayor, now it's going to be fair for every single council person here to check in with our own view and argue our own view tonight, when it should rightly be at the next meeting.
That's, I'm agreeing with that.
So you're not going to let me ask the citizen a question?
I'm, I'm concerned with what he, what he's saying.
Well, so much for transparency in government. It was my fault. Thank you.
You'll be back next week, next meeting?
I will.
Cause we, because well, then we'll have council debate and council can ask questions. So I think that we'll continue with them.
Okay. So then if I understand correctly, though, in the third reading, the public is not, not allowed to debate?
We don't have a public hearing where the public can't come up, but a council member can ask questions. And so if you're out there and a council member has a question, they could invite you up. Which is why I'm thinking that this dialogue's probably more for the next meeting, as long as you're going to be here.
I have it on my skin.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other proponents? Anybody want to speak in favor? Go ahead. And if you'd state your name for the record.
Michael Tiedemann, 101 Somerset Drive, Papillion, Nebraska. Um, first, I want to thank Councilman Sunday for putting this forward. I think this is a move in the right direction. Secondly, I take great exception to one Councilman, but he tried to completely discredit a previous citizen's opinion. She didn't own the trailer that he felt deemed that, where she didn't have the, uh, skin of the game. I think that's absolutely reprehensible, and that is, should not be happening.
The, the topic is the ordinance, not council members' actions. Let's stay on topic.
Um, so there is a financial burden to... Um, so there is a financial burden to them, um, having to store their, their trailers in other facilities. Not only the storage fees, the extra time to travel to and from the storage, also the gas usage to get their trailers to and from storage. Um, there's also like the previous speaker said, there's limited storage facilities around the area, which means we have to go further and further to retrieve our trailers. As far as the liberty aspect, we pay for our land. We pay for our taxes even after it's paid off. Government is still dictating what we can do on our land. We are self-funding the restrictions of our own freedom. Um, you know, this is just, it's a simple thing. Let us have our trailers. Let us enjoy our community. If we have a problem with one of our neighbors, we can go talk to them and rectify it ourselves. We don't need government stepping into our everyday lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you own a trailer?
I do.
How long is it?
It's under the, I'm in compliance as well.
It's under forty-five feet?
Yes, but I still be able to have an opinion on this matter.
Oh, I, I'm not objecting to your opinion, but I was looking to see why it's necessary to change the ordinance. If your, if your trailer can be parked next to your house under the current ordinance, why do we need to change it?
I believe, um, that the government should allow me to have freedom instead of restricting my freedom. This is a move in the right direction to restore the freedoms that were taken away from me.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Tiedemann, are you aware that, uh, under the proposed change, um, you can only park in front during those six months if you don't have side parking available?
Side parking on my house would be against the, uh, code, city code for me to put side parking in my house. So my boat is parked in my front driveway. Um, come winter, it goes into storage. I pay about a thousand dollars to store it for months during the winter.
So it's not a question of you could park in the side, you can only park in the front if you can't park in the side under the change. Do you understand that to be the case? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents want to speak in favor? Yes, sir. Again, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Bruce DeYoung. I live at three oh nine Fall Creek Road in, uh, Eagle Ridge. Um, I've been an RV owner for about the last eight years. And of, of those eight years, or I guess of eight of the last ten years. Um, in two thousand and nineteen, I sold my last RV. This was after the last time we met. Um, sold my last RV, not because, uh, you know, I couldn't get along with the ordinance because I did find a, uh, did find a storage spot. But because, you know, I was looking for a different style. Well, it took me about two years to find an RV. Mr. Mumgarth, I do not have a place to store my RV on the side of the house. I have a big tree in the front yard and it keeps me, prevents me from parking my, uh, parking my RV on the side of the house. I would like to have the opportunity to store my RV for many of the same reasons that the earlier speaker had mentioned. Security, not worrying about, uh, rodents, not worrying about somebody hitting my RV. I did and used to store it out at the base. My previous RV stored it out at the base and did not have any issues with anybody hitting it. I had a pull-through RV, uh, spot. But, uh, there was a windstorm that did park a utility trailer that did a complete U-turn right up against the side of my RV. You know, wasn't that anybody did it intentional? It wasn't, uh, you know, there wasn't, uh, severe damage. But that's just one example of, uh, you know, an instance. Um, and the reason I bring that up is if you have an accident or if somebody's pulling out of their spot and it hits your, hit your trailer, it could be weeks, it could be months before you get your trailer back. And that can pretty much kill an entire, uh, RV season. Uh, we enjoy camping, so we need a spot that's reasonable access, but it also provides that assurance we're not going to be accidentally hit. Many storage sites also pack their RVs, one on top of the other, not literally on top, but in depth behind each other, one behind each other. And oftentimes it's inaccessible. You got to make, you got to take coordination, um, to get access to your RV. I'm fortunate. I have found a spot, like I said, but that ordinance, this ordinance is another tax on me as a property owner to pay for this additional parking. So I'm, I'm in favor of doing away with the, uh, you know, the, the limitation in general. But that's not really what's, uh, kind of in discussion here. So businesses that do store the, uh, RVs are at premium prices. Um, they can charge that because of ordinances such as this. A ten by thirty space online was a hundred and twenty-three dollars a month. Now, I wouldn't have went there, but it was a hundred and twenty-three dollars a month. So I did call Armor and I also called, uh, Dino Storage. Armor had one spot available for a ten by thirty RV in Gretna for ninety dollars. That's ninety dollars a month, over a thousand dollars a year. In Blair, there was one available for sixty bucks a month that would work with my RV. Obviously I had already found another one, but I wanted just for data purposes that that was out there. Farmers fields really are the, the only option, the only availability. And I heard that discussion was brought up about taking business away from, you know, from, uh, business owners here in the Papillion area. Um, it, people are already taking them to Farmer's Field because that's available and you can get access. Uh, but it doesn't alleviate the, uh, the rodent risk. Five days is too short. A couple of weeks ago, this, my personal, uh, experience, I used, used my camper. I pulled it into my driveway on a Wednesday. This is a Wednesday. The weekend, the ninth of July, I drove it out to, uh, or we, we pulled it out to, uh, Des Moines for a, uh, for a shower for my niece. Um, we were going to camp at a local park, pulled it out there. We got all the way to Neola, Iowa, and we had a flat tire. And so we changed the tire. When it continued on our way, came back. Um, I decided that, well, I'm going to, I'm going to work with Miguel at Discount Tire, local business, trying to be, bring business to my own community. Um, gave him a call on Monday morning. The earliest I could get in was Tuesday at four thirty in the afternoon. At Tuesday at ten o'clock, I got a visit from our code enforcement and Judy's great. Don't get me wrong. I'm not bashing on her. She's got a job to do and, you know, I've talked to her in length. She's great. But, uh, at ten o'clock in the morning, I got a visit from her. Um, she had a sticker on my door saying that I wasn't in compliance. My, my vehicle, my RV had only been there five days. This five days, this has to change. I mean, I can't do maintenance on my vehicle in my own driveway. Um, I, I just think that's, that's far too short. One other point I wanted to make. Uh, you know, if, if the ten days, if that's not acceptable, the April first to thirty-eight, thirty September, you know, use it as much as you want. That works for me, um, because I use it a lot more than ten days a month. But I do try to comply with, you know, with rules and regulations. I'm a twenty-six year, year Army, Army guy and, you know, I know that we've got regulations we've got to comply with. And then the last point is that thirteen feet that's in the, in the ordinance, right now, the schematic, um, I could not find, and this is me personally, but I've looked and it seems rather arbitrary. Omaha doesn't list it. La Vista doesn't list the thirteen feet. I'm not sure really where that thirteen feet came out. So I started looking at Sarpy County zoning regulations. And as amended and approved by the Sarpy County Board of Commissioners by resolution on Jan-, on June second, twenty twenty, the lot line front shall mean the property line abutting a street. Lot line rear shall mean a lot line not abutting a street, which is opposite and most distant from the front lot line. Further, the general legislation subdivision of land, the front, front of a lot shall be construed as a portion nearest the street. Then the front yard, the space extending from the full width of the lot, lying between the front lot line and the front setback line, which my understanding, and there's probably a real estate person in here, but my understanding is that, that front setback is actually the front of the house. So it sets, sets back. Um, so i- in my estimation, it appears this ordinance is sort of in disagreement with the zoning regulations as they're currently written. So I don't think anybody would contest about moving their camper if there was a utility requirement, you know, to get access. I don't think anybody would do that. I would be willing to do that. I'm sure anyone else would. But, uh, that thirteen foot reference to the front lot line then makes it impossible for me as a twenty-eight foot, my RV is twenty-eight feet long, not extensive. It doesn't stick over the sidewalk. But it makes it impossible for me to have mine parked in the front of my house without violating that thirteen feet. And I get that the, you know, as long as it's, you know, under forty-five feet, or I think it's forty-five feet that's being proposed. Um, we're good as long as it's less than ten days, but that thirteen feet's kind of, kind of inhibits me. So with that, uh, I thank you for listening and, um, clear consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Ringberg?
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Because we, every time we, we, this comes up on our agenda in some fashion. I tried to do a little research about RVs and the circumstances. My question to you, because you apparently checked with a lot of places for spaces. Do you find that most places store RVs, are, are they behind locked fences? Number one. Number two, is there any security present for most of them, half of them? Do you have any idea?
Well, I would say that, uh, Dino Storage or some of the, some of the major storage areas.
Right.
Again, it wasn't available, but if it was available, some of those would probably be a little more secure.
Okay.
Problem is, you know, again, I'm not, I don't want to drive all the way to Grandin. I don't want to go to, go to Blair to get, you know, take, uh, retrieve my RV.
So it's.
Are not secure.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, there's no, no storage on those farmer's fields.
So it's a scarcity of local locations is what concerns you? That, if you had more local locations, it would be more, it would be more favorable, if that's the right word, to, to store it maybe if it was closer?
Well, if you're asking me, if Papillion wants to put a city lot to offer that as a service to its citizens, I would say absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thanks. I'll write that down.
I know what you're saying. Yes, sir. That would, that would be helpful.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Clarifying questions. Mr. Mumgarth?
A question for you. Uh, okay. You've mentioned, um, you used to have an RV, but you sold it. When did you sell?
I sold that in May of two thousand and nineteen.
And why did you sell it?
Well, because the, uh, the, the floor plan in this RV, it, uh, was bunk beds and it's just me and my wife now. And it had no slide out. So we purchased an RV, uh, that had a slide out and had.
Okay. When did you buy the new, the one you have now?
Bought it in, uh, March, on the thirteenth of March of this year.
And how long is it?
It's twenty-eight feet, uh, twenty, twenty-seven feet times, it's twenty-eight.
Okay, so I'm, I'm looking for how this ordinance fits. Our current ordinance fits with what your experience was. Um, so you were aware of the current ordinance when you bought your current RV, right?
Of course I was. But it wasn't, it wasn't, uh, because of the ordinance that kept me from, um, from buying an RV before or causing yourself.
Okay.
It's my enjoyment of RVing is why I have an RV.
Yeah, and that's what I.
An ordinance that is or is not in place.
Well, that's one of the things I'm looking at is how much does our current ordinance get in the way of people enjoying that hobby? And at least in your experience, did not get the way of you enjoying your hobby?
Well, I'm saying that, uh, I have to bring my camper to my house. I have to load it up, um, enjoy it for the weekend, bring it back and then drive it all the way or take it all the way over to the storage. Um, it's, it's kind of an inconvenience when I already pay taxes on my property and I incur this extra, uh, charge for, you know, for me to store my, my camper elsewhere.
Okay, then you talked about the code enforcement people coming. Excuse me. I, I'm very, I've long been interested in, in how the current ordinance is, is enforced. And so I'm going to ask you a question about that. Uh, what did they tell you was the reason they were there?
Well, they told me that, uh, and I, I live on Fall Creek Road. Um, it was because, it's probably because somebody called the mayor hotline, is how it was expressed to me. Um, but it was called by me and one other person on Fall Creek. Um, I suspect that it's probably, uh, or possibly somebody driving through the neighborhood trying to get into another place that may have apprehension or, uh, opposition to a, to an RV.
Well, did they?
I was not blocking the driveway, or a correction was not blocking the sidewalk and did not heed anybody's vision.
So it was.
Not a safety or health issue.
It was my understanding that they would only come out if somebody, another resident had complained. Is that what the, uh, explanation was?
Somebody had called the mayor's hotline. They didn't say it was a resident in mind either. But I'm also adjacent to Eagle Hills, which folks drive through our, um, through our street to get to Ramsey Station.
Okay, so.
I can't, I can't.
All right, well, in any.
Speculation, sir, if I, if anything, I think you have to ask Judy that.
Yeah, yeah, I will. I've talked to Judy many times and, and that was my understanding. That's why I was trying to match your experience with what I've been told. But it seems like your experience was a situation where somebody in, somebody at least who knew they could call the mayor's hotline had an objection to what you were doing.
Well, I mean, I could call the mayor's hotline all day long, uh, with the branches hanging down and so.
Well.
Issue a day, but I also think it's a matter of being a good neighbor. If you come talk to me, if something that I'm doing, parking in my, in my ways offending you, just come talk to me.
Well, okay, um.
Not talking about being confrontational, but just come talk to me.
Uh, again, uh, trying to find out information about the code enforcement. When you explained to them that the trailer was there simply because you were getting maintenance done on it and you had to wait until the tire was ready?
I was embarrassed when you got the tape.
Okay.
I was going, my neighbor called me when they were there.
That was, then.
Mr. Mumgarth?
Yeah.
We can investigate the mayor's hotline item and get you the details.
Oh, I was just wondering, um, when, who did you make that explanation to?
I, I called Judy. She reached out and went on there.
Okay, and what was the response?
It was very, I mean, she was very favorable. She informed me that somebody had called the mayor's hotline. Didn't say if it was a resident or my neighbor or who it was, but somebody had called the mayor's hotline.
We'll, we'll, we'll track down the details for you and get that for you before the next council meeting.
The reason I'm asking the question is because I, it's been my experience that the code enforcement is very understanding and, you know, not a hard-langer at all.
I had the impression that she was a hard-langer.
Okay.
Just carrying out, um, based off of a task from, I'm presuming, the mayor's hotline.
Okay, well, thank you. I've learned something. Thank you.
Do you have any other? Yes, Mr. Sunday?
I've got a question. Um, it's kind of the flip side of a question Mr. Mumgarth just asked you about. Or pointing out the fact that you bought your current RV after the ordinance change in twenty seventeen. Uh, would you say that it's fair to say that scores of Papillion RV owners already owned their RVs when the rug was pulled out from under them in two seven, two thousand seventeen?
I, I would say that, because I, I was one of those. And I had a two thousand thirteen, or two thousand, uh, twelve RV that I bought in two thousand thirteen. And yes, um, my neighbor up the street had stored this on the side of this house.
I want to, I want to be careful that we stay on the current ordinance and not the prior ordinance. I think we're getting into the debate again. Um, I'm going to start controlling it pretty tight. Yeah.
Thank you.
And we're moving beyond clarification questions. Thank you very much. Any other proponents want to speak in favor of it?
Hi there, everyone here in Walnut Creek. Um, I just wanted to continue a little bit along, uh, Mr. Mumgarth's thoughts. Um, it would seem that if you're going to have a law or a rule in place that you would want, you know, if there's any other laws or rules that you would expect and hope that the enforcement folks that are charged with carrying out that or law would actually do what they're supposed to do, which would be enforced. And so having a law and then saying, well, we'll go gently on you is not, I mean, that's, it seems quite, like quite a powerful position to be in. Um, and also to the previous, you know, the, the line of sight, uh, laws that already exist seem to be, uh, sufficient in terms of if, if, uh, you know, as he was talking about, somebody wants to have, use their property in a certain way, it seems like they should be allowed to. If safety is the issue, um, it, it seems like line, line of sight should be the distinguishing factor in whether somebody is, is breaking that law or not. I'm not an RV owner myself. Um, I, uh, you'll find a consistent theme in my comments in regards to freedom and, and civil liberties for sure. If you're not sure of where I stand, just, uh, it'll be on the side of less government. And, uh, you guys will be most likely to get my vote when you're doing the least amount of work as possible. Um, and I just wanted to comment on the black market, the, uh, idea of having taken away businesses. You guys created, you know, the black market by having, uh, this rule in place. And so, um, it seems like the, the, the fact that people are benefiting from, uh, overregulation should not be a detractor to us rolling back that regulation. Um, I'm sure there's plenty of other vehicles and lines of business that those folks could get in once they're out from under the umbrella of, uh, of the government. get in once they're out from under the umbrella of, uh, of the government. So that's, uh, and the last comment is just on the neighbors snitching on each other. Um, I don't think that's a, that's kind of what I was getting at with line of sight is that, you know, there's no need for, if they're, if the appropriate snitching would be if there's a line of sight issue, the appropriate snitching would not necessarily be, uh, just because somebody enjoys, uh, traveling and vacations and sightseeing. So that's all.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. To begin with, we, we've had an ordinance that regulated and had restrictions on parking RVs and trailers on parking lots since 1995. So I don't think this is a situation where everybody, anybody's been surprised by what we've done. But this idea of freedom, and, and we've had this discussions about freedom many times. And I will just ask you, how do you, how do you look at it? That if, if the park, first off, the 20 feet in the front, to my knowledge, was roughly half of the setback of a, of a house in many locations. Uh, so it was kind of, well, okay, you can block off the front views of your neighbors for half of it, but you can't go any further than that because of restrictions on sightlines. If parking RVs and big objects in, in the driveway negatively impacts your neighbor, how does that, doesn't that take away the freedom that your neighbor would otherwise enjoy?
Their freedom of wherever they play, I mean, they don't have to stay in that house.
Well, and let's say that, let's say the neighbor has a very, you're, let's say you have a very long RV that takes up most of your driveway and it sits there for long periods of time. And your neighbor decides I've had it with this and he wants to sell. And he comes to sell it and the real estate agent tells him something I've been told by real estate agents. Well, that thing in your neighbor's driveway is going to drive some buyers away. Um, has the other persons, has the non-RV owners' freedom been impacted?
Short answer is no. I don't.
Well, first off, they can't enjoy the house that they want to live in.
And my neighbor have, you know, they might have a tougher time selling because I have really ugly backyards and piddly boys and stuff. Like there's all sorts of things that are going to do that might turn a buyer away from my neighbor's house, but I don't.
Well, here's, here's my difficulty in putting it all together. Um, if, if your neighbor in this hypothetical has to sell the house he likes to live in and get out of there because the neighbor, well, but choices, we're talking choices. The, you know, the, the RV owner.
Let's ask, let's stay with some clarifying questions. I don't want to get into debate.
I'm interested in a citizen's point of view. May change mine, I don't know. And so I'm just asking if, if the RV owner has this complete freedom to park a big object in his parking, in his driveway for lengthy periods of time? And that results in the person next door losing the enjoyment of living in his house? How, how do I balance those freedoms?
Premise though, is what is in question. Like my, my neighbor actually painted his house this ugly blue color, right? If I lived next to him, I would be tipped, but I can't stop him from painting his house that ugly blue color. My yard is a mess. I've got kids' toys, even dilapidated playsets, like it is a mess. And I'm sure my neighbors don't enjoy looking out of it every day.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. I'm, I'm working on the premise that having this in the driveway affects your neighbor.
Sure, it's just one of many factors.
Um, I can tell you that I've experienced at least three, four, five times, somebody coming to me and telling me exactly that.
Thank you. Do you have any other proponents want to speak in favor? Welcome. And name an address for the record, please.
My name is Robert Arch. I live at 1001 Crest Road in Papillion, and I have since 1997. When I first came to Nebraska, or back to Nebraska, let me say, we drove around, looked at probably 27 different houses. The first one I looked at was the one I live in today. What drove me to that neighborhood was right across the street was a gentleman had an RV. Right down the street was a gentleman that had a boat. Another guy down the street had an RV. I'm bringing an RV with me and with my family. One that had the quad bunks like the gentleman back here was just talking about. I don't own that one anymore. I, I'm my third one since then. So when Mr. Mungard talks about maybe devaluing the property because there's an RV there, my wife's a realtor. She'll tell you, and she spoke before this audience in the past. People want neighborhoods with RVs. People who don't want to live in a neighborhood with an RV can go to a whole bunch of other neighborhoods where they have covenants that tell you, you can't park an RV or any other thing in your yard or your driveway. In 2017, when you passed the last, uh, ordinance, the one before this one, that limited us to 35 feet, I was in non-compliance. During Christmas and New Years of 2017, the coldest time in a long time, code enforcement came out to my house, knocked on my door. Said that she had come out here because somebody had called and complained that our camper was too long and she needed to measure it, which she did. She came back to my door and told me it was six inches too long. And then she struggled, it was so cold that she couldn't wind up her tape measure. I felt so bad for her and I asked her, now what? And she goes, well, I just turned in my report and then you'll hear from the city. So since then, you extended the camper regulation to 45 feet. I'm in compliance, except for I was not parked in the zone. I was in between two zones. Part of my camper, 19 feet of it, was parked in the front zone because I had enough concrete along the side of my house, along the side of my garage, to park it to an extent in the back, but leaving 19 feet in the front. She didn't tell me that I was not in compliance because I wasn't parked in my zone. I was not in compliance because I was six inches too long. Today, after spending thousands of dollars on reporing concrete, and I'm in the middle of redoing my fence, which I have permits for all that, I'm before you today because I am a proponent of the new measures, not for myself, but for some of the other people here who don't have the opportunity to work on or to store their campers, to enjoy their campers in their driveways. There aren't a lot of places out here where you can go and you can easily find someplace to park your camper. I know a good friend of mine this year just moved from Colorado, bought his camper with him, parks it in Gretna, backed into somebody's pickup truck because it's so tight and it's so constricted that he damaged somebody else's property, which he's paid for. I go get parts for my camper at the RV stores and I can consistently hear people talking about, what do you got for rodent control? I'm parked out in the field. Mice ate my wiring. I got a thousand dollars worth of brake work to do because they ate all the wires down there that go to my brakes. That's not a good environment. And when you don't have a choice because my camper's six inches too long, that's not good either. So I just want to be in support here of, of the ordinance. And I want to applaud you for the work that you've done already. I know this has been a long time, many years. Papillion's growing. There's enough space here for everybody. There's neighborhoods, there's subdivisions that if you don't want to have a camper parked next door, you can go live there. There's fewer neighborhoods where you don't have an ordinance and you can park a camper. And we're not, you know, I'm not talking about inexpensive campers. And we've talked about this in this, in this forum in the past too. Between my truck and my camper, I've got close to a hundred thousand dollars worth of property that I'm paying taxes on in addition to the taxes that I pay on my property for living here. So again, thank you for your time, for listening to us as a group, listening to those of us that can speak, for those that are too timid to come and speak, don't know that there's a forum, we're here for them too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? If you could state your name for the record.
I'm Donald Cavanus. I live in Eagle Ridge. And I've had a camper since 2003 of some kind, so I've had one for a long time. I've enjoyed camping for many years. I did it after I retired. And I'm also one of those that they call winter Texans. So I'd just like to also bring up that camping is not just in the spring or summer or fall. Some of us leave in the wintertime and we need the availability to be able to work our trailers under that condition. The main thing I'm talking about, because the layout of my house is such that I cannot park my trailer, uh, on term in the driveway, uh, is the five days. Five days a month may seem like a lot, but it really is not. At my age and with the work of loading and unloading a camper, I've always wondered, how did it end up an odd day? Most campers, they bring it in to their grounds one day, load it, and they take it, if they can't leave it in their property to the storage unit, then on another day. So that's two days that you spend for one trip. I've actually had true experience of leaving in the wintertime. And if you think it's fun in Nebraska to sometimes move your trailer from storage to your property, uh, think again about the snowstorms and even the, I myself was the weatherman when I worked, and even the best forecast does not always come true. And you get caught where the weather itself just causes you a disruption. Uh, so I'm strongly in favor of the 10-day change, or at least an even day change, which isn't identified. I'd also like to support those that are trying to do their, um, the new parking in their property. I've fought the rodents in the storage area. I had over a thousand dollar damage one year when a raccoon decided to visit my trailer and tore up the wiring. I've had my trailer broken into in a storage area and, uh, fortunately, uh, I do not keep a lot of things there, so there was not, uh, a great loss, yet it occurred. Also, the gentleman spoke about when you bring your trailer and use it, in, for instance, I store my trailer in Dino's, you cannot do maintenance of your trailer in a storage area. It is very expensive to have to take your trailer for maintenance by a professional when you can do it yourself. And I'm not talking about big jobs, but just odds and ends jobs. Uh, you can do yourself, you can get the parts in the RV store, as somebody said. So again, uh, I'm in favor of being able to do that kind of thing. The last thing I'd like to say is there's definitely an increase in the number of people that are using trailers. It's almost like the current situation with cars. If you have to have something done right now, you wait a long time before a dealer will work you in. And you lose that time. So I thank you for listening to me. Again, I've enjoyed the RV trailer business. I do own, as I said, a fifth wheel trailer and I thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents want to speak in favor? Any opponents to the ordinance? I'll close the public hearing. And again, uh, the next council meeting will be the, uh, council debate, um, and discussion. And, um, again, just clarification, um, it's not a public hearing for the public to come up again, but council members are free to invite people up for questions and, and discussion. So if you are here, there may be an opportunity to, to, to talk. Um, next is, uh, or, item E2, ordinance 1934, an ordinance to approve minor amendments to the 2018 IRC and IBC and the 2017 NEC, in order to make them consistent with fence and pool regulations in the zoning code as well as current inspection processes. It's public hearing. I'll open it. Do you have any proponents or opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Mungard.
Uh, I, I have a question for staff to be answered before the next meeting. Can I?
In regards to the previous item?
Is it appropriate for me to ask that? Okay. Um, I, I, and I've discussed it with, with Sean. I have a question about changing the depth of the pool requirement for fences currently. Um, as I understand it, you don't need a fence until your pool has at least 24 inches in depth. And that's being changed to require a fence if your pool is, has more than 18 inches in depth. Uh, you, you can respond now or you can send us all an email. I'm looking for, why are we making that, you know, why was it 24 picked and why would we change it to 18? I'm looking for ordinances that have a practical effect. And I don't see the practical effect there other than the fence ordinance, the fence requirement would then come into play more often.
We'll, we'll get that researched and out, and we'll, we'll send that out to all the whole council.
That's all I ask.
Okay. And we'll do that before the next council meeting. So the clarification of the 18 versus 24 depth. Okay.
All right. Mr. Mayor, if I could, just real quick, um, part, part of it's, and just for the sake of the public, in case they're here for this particular issue or interested, the, the standard international code had been 24. My understanding was the city had it at 18. We moved it thinking that we wanted to go to most standard, which is what's done in the area. And the planning commission basically said, no, we would prefer it to be back to what it was before.
So we'll get that clarification out to the full council. Item E3, ordinance 1935, an ordinance to amend section 20511 of Article II Development Definitions and Section 205215B of Article 34 Supplemental Site Development Regulations of Chapter 205 Zoning Regulations Having to Do with Patios. The applicant's city of Papillion. It's also a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah. Again, this is just a question for staff to answer before the next meeting. I certainly understand, um, what we're talking about here, but it, but I wonder why have we had the setback that we have for so long? As I understand it, we have a setback of, well, 20 feet, 10 feet, something like that. Rear yard, only talking about rear yards. And we're going to change that. They've had a very good explanation of what that means with structures and stuff back there. But I want to know, well, we've had this rule for a long time. What was the rationale behind the rule that we have in place now?
And again, for the public, this one specific to patios and encroaching in. So we'll get that same, we'll get a similar explanation out to the full council before the next meeting. Item F1, ordinance 1933, an ordinance to amend section 16615, vacation of Article 2. Item F1, ordinance 1933, an ordinance to amend Section 16615 Vacation of Article 2 Streets of Chapter 166 Streets and Sidewalks of the Papillion Municipal Code, having to do with the vacation of streets and alleys. The applicant city of Papillion. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1933? Motion by Councilman Sunday? Second by Councilman Glover. There is a typo in the ordinance, so we will need a motion to amend, and when it's talking in Section 16615C, it talks about any portion of a street, alley, it should be or, just changing of to or, so it's street or alley in that first sentence. So it'll read, "Upon the vacation of all or any portion of a street or alley, the city clerk or any designated shall within 30 days of the effective date of vacation file the certified copy." Is there, so moved by Councilman Ingberg? Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote on the motion to amend.
Sunday. Mungard. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Kluk. Stube. Ingberg. 8A0NAs.
Motion is amended. Any council discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, please vote.
Sunday. Mungard. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Kluk. Stube. Ingberg. 8A0NAs.
Motion passes. We've already handled F2 and F3. So item F4, Resolution R210146, a resolution to approve a request for extension of the West Papillion Catholic Community Preliminary Platte. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210146? Motion by Councilman Ingberg? Second by Councilman Sunday? Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mungard. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Kluk. Stube. Ingberg. 8A0NAs.
Motion passes. Item F5, Resolution R210147, a resolution to approve a request for purchase and dedication of street right-of-way for North Osage Street. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210147? Motion by Councilman Kluk? Second by Councilman Stube. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mungard. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Kluk. Stube. Ingberg. 8A0NAs.
Motion passes. All the regular agenda items, and no committees have met in the last two weeks. Any general comments from the floor? Seeing none, any council comments?
Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. Thanks for everybody that showed up to the softball complex ribbon cutting. Those fields are getting a lot of use. I think at the time of the ribbon cutting, they had already had about 83 games, I think it was, and there's already some tournaments scheduled out there. And I think that was the first softball fields we've added in almost 20 years. Imagine all of the growth, we were way behind, so that was very much needed, so thank you for that. Had a meeting with, there's an organization in the area called the First Responders Foundation. It's a not-for-profit supporting public safety, and we had an investigative meeting about maybe starting a Papillion chapter, so as that comes about, I'll keep you updated on that. Both chiefs were in that meeting, along with some residents that might have interest in serving on the initial board. We had the wastewater agency meeting. Nothing major came out of it, other than approved the audit and starting the right-of-way acquisition for the forced main that would be along Platteview Road, getting to the treatment plant over by Bellevue. And then we approved a general agreement to allow Bellevue to bring some additional land into the sewer agency that'll be close proximity to that forced main. So it's most, most of the items are just progressing on finishing the design of the forced main and getting that operational. Probably next spring, there'll be pipe going in the ground for that project. United Cities met, Ms. Powers already gave the update there. It's just a regular reminder, if there are things that are of our interest of you, that would take stake legislation, now is a good time to be bringing those forward, because we can then work with the other cities, get that crafted. The legislature's in the second year of a biennium, so probably not a lot, not a lot of things will get introduced this next session. But again, that'll give us time to work on it and then get something introduced for the next session, so make sure you're letting us know if there's anything of interest there. And then National Night Out was tonight. Excuse me. Thank you, chief, for that, and it was a little bit different, and a little bit different location, but it looked like it was a pretty good crowd out tonight. And they were also able to actually demonstrate some of our new technology that we've got there, so I think that was very good. And then just another reminder, the citizen survey. If you're not familiar with it, about every four years, we've done a survey. It's called the National Citizen Survey, if anybody's interested in looking it up. It's a national, it's been going on for probably about 14 years, so the questions are very tested and refined, and we can be benchmarked against other communities that take it. And the last two times it's taken, from a national perspective, Papillion's had a much higher response rate than any other jurisdiction, so we put a lot of credibility in that survey. So if you are one that is selected to take that survey, really encourage responding to that. And we'll send out about three different reminders to people that are selected, and again, it was a blind selection, so we can't influence that. Most of the major items, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Sunday. Mungard. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Kluk. Stube. Ingberg. 8A0NAs.